Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council Meeting of September 13th, 2006, Wednesday. We are here in John Farrar Council Chamber's Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. in open meetings that the public can come down to City Hall for. If you are unable to come downtown, we also invite you to testify or to watch the council meeting from Van Nuys City Hall, where we meet on the first Friday of each month as well. We are broadcast live each meeting on Channel 35 through the city's cable system and rebroadcast in the evening. And we also are available, if you're closer to a computer, through the city's homepage at www.lacity.org, where you can watch the council meeting through streaming video. And also, you can call in on council phone to listen via audio to the meetings of the city council or our committees at (213) 621-CITY. We invite folks to come to testify here on items that have not yet had public hearings or for general public comment as well. And we also have our council committees and their agendas posted on our city's webpage again at www.lacity.org. We have 13 members and a quorum present, so with that, Mr. Clerk, if you'll please call the roll.
Cardinus, Gruel, Hunt, Weasel, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosenthal, Smith, Vice, Weston, Zine, Garcetti, 13 members present, and a quorum.
Mr. President. Thank you. Before we begin the approval of the minutes, I wanted to recognize, okay, we'll wait one second for a special recognition from a council member, if we can move to the minutes, please.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Zine moves, and Mr. Smith seconds. If there's no objection, those minutes will be unanimously approved. Next order of business?
Committory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Reyes moves, and Mr. Labange seconds. There's no objections, that will be unanimously approved as well.
Mr. President, do you wish to take a public comment at this time?
Yes, let's take public comment at this time. We have before us two speakers so far. If we can set the clock, please, at two minutes. And Lily Lakic, if you'd like to come forward, and then Sylvia Hawkins. Council members, we're going to take our general public comment right now, if I can direct your attention to our podium, and welcome to City Council.
Thank you, honorable City Council. As I was not given my promise two minutes to speak yesterday, I am back with my last gasp to speak truth to power. My name is Lily Lakic. I am an artist, an arts district property owner, an author, a teacher, and the founder of the Museum of Neon Art, which was in my studio in the Arts District for 12 years before moving to Grand Hope Park. I am here to protest the way in which the votes for the Arts District bid were obtained by the Central City East Association and its executive director, Estelle Lopez. Lopez and the CCEA approached property owners by asking them what it would take to have them sign on to the Arts District bid. They made deals with some, gerrymandered a couple of high-profile properties out of the district, and if they ran into resistance, they told property owners that unless they voted yes for the Arts District bid, they would never get a building permit in the city of Los Angeles. Councilperson Jan Perry, who is...
She's expected at 10:40.
Yeah, she's the councilperson for Traction Avenue, where I have my property, has a particular relationship with Estelle Lopez, the executive director of the CCEA. Lopez is her, is, Jan Perry's, she's her self-described shopping buddy, and apparently it is alleged that Lopez shopped herself out of her first bid job by using $70,000 worth of taxpayer money to decorate her offices. Because I believe Jan Perry will rubber stamp this thing, I implore the rest of the council to decline to endorse the Arts District bid without further investigation into the extortion and intimidation tactic used by CCEA to secure votes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Sylvia Hawkins is our next speaker, to be followed by Matt Dowd.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Hawkins. The United States of America, rule of voting and election must be changed because of no identification of animal people whom have never registered to vote. How would we know, United States of America, public people, if they have faked their funeral before or after marriage? No more voting because of no illegal sales count on house-to-house living. Councilmember Wilson, Huzara, and Wendy Jerhurel is now faking that their election term is ending in less than six months, an area of work so that whomever is running against them will automatically lose their calling election. I am not with a four-year election, and now they're automatically winning an eight-year term. It is called reelection. Now someone is voting or running against them, they do not automatically win an eight-term election. Voting on any election day is out of order, since so far we have not received a head count of dead bodies in Louisiana Levy disaster. What is the head count? Some of these people that died in Louisiana and in the muslot is councilmembers, is House Representatives, is senators. Therefore, we don't get no head count on who is alive. Therefore, the 50 states propose to have 50 mayors and councils.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins.
Thank you very much. My name is Ms. Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you. Matt Dowd is our next speaker.
Hi, my name is Matt Dowd. Just want to point out, public comments been switched right to the beginning of the meeting because obviously there were no outlaws, but guess what? We're here. I'm in the Venice Neighborhood Council election. It's this Sunday at Venice High School, 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Another thing I just noticed, this is the Los Angeles Business Journal, headline "Beach Bummer." Mr. Rosenthal and City Council, Eric Garcetti included, "Beach Bummer: Merchants of Venice Report Less Spending." It's, no one's going there, but, oh, other ocean spots draw bigger crowds, so people aren't going to the number-one tourist attraction in Los Angeles County because the attractions are gone. The Butter Man, the Pacific Breeze guy, the guys with the T-shirts, the jewelry, you know, and, and this ordinance of Venice, it's just like, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Gruel, the graffiti thing from yesterday. Now, we've got Dennis Zine and Bill Rosenthal, Ed Reyes, getting up with their gut instinct, standing up with concerns about that ordinance, because once again, you're making criminals, potentially criminals, out of the victims. You know, people are sick of cleaning that stuff off 10, 20 times, and now you're going to make them do it, and that's what the community's against, making people do stuff if they choose to ignore it now and go, you know what, I don't want to deal with that, and don't make me. And then you wonder why you've got people in here with detectives saying you've got no leads on these major crimes. I've been talking about that for a long time, and I am angry about that, because I don't want to see these people in here with...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Michael Hunt, and then Walter Bechtel will be next.
Good morning, City Council, back on the record. I'm here about the Venice Beach issue as well. I would like to see Ms. Gruel reframe some of the graffiti. I think it can be reframed in a way that it can work for everybody. I just think it need to be tweaked and just some reframing. We don't want to make criminals out of good citizens, such as Venice Beach did, make criminals out of people who are just trying to feed their families and things like that, so, you know, I've always liked you, so I think that it should be some reframing in that ordinance and to make it work for everybody. Okay, and, and that's a good thing. Tom Labange, Bill Rosenthal, you guys were part of that 4215 issue when I got all the court papers and things like that. You guys, you guys were the backers behind that. You and Mark Brown and everybody else need to sit down with probably me and Matt Dowd and get that taken care of as soon as possible. It makes you guys look bad, and it makes it look like you guys are genociding against one group of people, you know, and that's as far as I want to take it, but you guys really need to sit down and explain you guys' theory about that. And the jobs in the community, we're talking about 2.5 jobs in the community and community-based policing, 10 hours a day for over 20 or 30 vendors that was down there taking care of their family. That's important. That's important to the vendors, that's important to the east side. It goes back, a lot of the money that we spent with the east side was to pay their rent with the necessities of us buying lunch or dinner while we were down there, and that little money makes the economy go around at this time in need when gas and inflation is high. All the support is needed, so I think you guys need to revisit that and take that off the agenda, and I think all City Council should do it as well. Thank you. My name is Michael Hunt.
Thank you. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker. Welcome, Mr. Bechtel.
Hello, yes. I wanted to reiterate and state something I already stated before about illegal wiretapping going on in the private sector. I was not talking about the President's Patriot Act. This is something that's going on in the entertainment industry. Also, I find that participants, I find people involved in the Department of Corrections who are illegally wiretapping. I am an artist, I have a fine art degree, I also have background in music, my father used to distribute records, et cetera, and I am out millions and millions of dollars through people who are doing this. Nobody has done anything, and I understand that refusal to act is only a criminal or action or in a civil court that provides immunity for people like yourselves who refuse to do anything about it. But I don't think that you're really representing the Constitution or the people of the United States if you allow or let these sort of things go on. And I am forced to inform my constituents, foreign and domestic, that you're not doing anything if you refuse to do something about this. So I would appreciate it, since you can identify Osama bin Laden through out of billions of people, that you please ask the FBI to prioritize the situation. I've contacted everybody all the way up to the Supreme Court. I've been sent back down here, and I'm, my next move is just simply like to inform the people, my constituents in domestic and foreign countries, that America is not representing its own Constitution. Thank you.
That closes our general public comment for today, if we can run through the agenda.
Mr. President, there, before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue item 21 week to September 20th.
Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing item 20 or 21? I'm sorry.
The 20th, one week.
So it's number 21 till the 20th.
Item number 21, one week to the 20th.
Got you, 2020. Any objection, colleagues, to continuing item number 20 until the 20th? If not, that'll be unanimously approved. Next items?
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 6 are confirmation of building and safety leans notice for public hearing. The department reports that on items 1 and 2, those can be received and filed in as much as the assessments have been paid. That leaves items 3 through 6, and there is a card on item number 3.
Okay. Why don't we call number 3 special for cards? I did want to inform the public, I believe it was, Mr. Clerk, you said that item number 7 and 8, the public hearings have already been closed on those?
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Okay. Let's see if there's any other specials, colleagues, 4, 5, and 6, and receiving filing 1 and 2. If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
Items 7 and 8 are BIDs for the old Granada Village property and the Arts District property, and the city clerk reports the results for the old Granada Village property BID was 70.69% in favor and 29.04% opposed, and the results for the Arts District property BID was 64.15% in favor and 35.85% opposed.
Okay.
And the public hearings were closed at yesterday's meeting.
For any members of the public that filled out cards, even though it said notice for public hearing, that was from yesterday that we did, so our apologies on that. If there's any council member who would like to call those special? Not? Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those both are approved. Next items?
Items 9 through 13 are street vacation items, notice for public hearing, and the recommendation for council action is to instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay. You have the instruction. Anybody wishing to call any of those special?
Mr. President, there is a card on item 10 and 12.
Okay, let's call 10 and 12 special for cards. And on the balance, any council members wishing to call them special? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Parks? Which one?
13.
13 forthwith. There's no objection. We're not, I, we'll send 13th forthwith. Next items, please. Yes, Mr. Labange?
Did you fill out a card, ma'am?
On which item, ma'am?
Number 10.
We've already called that special, ma'am. We'll get to it. It's up on the board, don't worry. Next items, please.
Item 14 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 10, and the recommendation is to grant the application.
Okay. Item number 14 will require a motion. Mr. Wesson, did you want to move the recommendation on the public convenience of necessity? Okay, Mr. Wesson moves. We'll second that, and if we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 15 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 11, and a motion is required to grant or deny the application.
Okay, Mr. Rosenthal moves that. I'll second that, to grant, yes, and we will open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item?
Item 16 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 3, and the recommendation is to also grant the application.
Mr. Zine? Mr. Zine moves the recommendation to grant the application. We'll open the roll.
Mr. President, there actually is a card on that item.
Well, let's call that special then for the card. My apologies. We'll have that motion on the table, and we'll call that special and hold that. Next item?
Item 17 is also a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 12. The recommendation is to grant the application, and there is also a card on that item.
Okay, we'll call that special for the card, although Mr. Smith moves that recommendation. Next items, please.
Items 18 through 31 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 18 and 19 are commission appointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, let's hold those on the desk, please.
That would leave items 21 through 31, and reports have been submitted on 25, 26, and 30.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials? Mr. Zine?
23.
23 for Mr. Zine. Mr. Parks?
31.
31 for Mr. Parks. Any other specials, colleagues? This is 21 and 22, and then 24 through 30. If not, let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 32 through 49 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and on item 32, the CIA opened and closed the bids this morning for the solid waste resources revenue bonds and awarded the sale to Citigroup Global Markets Incorporated at a true interest cost of 4.205116%.
Okay. Specials? Mr. Cardinus, 32?
32.
Okay. Other specials, colleagues? 33 through 49?
Our next speaker is Michael Hunt. And then Walter Bechtel will be next.
Good morning, City Council, back on the record. I'm here about the Venice Beach issue as well. I would like to see Ms. Grul reframed some of the graffiti. I think it can be reframed in a way that it can work for everybody. I just think it need to be tweaked and just some reframing. We don't want to make criminals out of good citizens such as Venice Beach did. Make criminals out of people who are just trying to feed their families and things like that. So, you know, I've always liked you. So I think that it should be some reframing in that ordinance and to make it work for everybody. Okay. And that's a good thing. Tom Labange, Bill Rosenthal, you guys were part of that 4215 issue when I got all the court papers and things like that. You guys, you guys were the backers behind that. You and Mark Brown and everybody else need to sit down with probably me and Matt Dow and get that taken care of as soon as possible. It makes you guys look bad and it makes it look like you guys are genociding against one group of people, you know, and that's as far as I want to take it. But you guys really need to sit down and explain you guys' theory about that. And the jobs in the community, we're talking about 2.5 jobs in the community and community-based policing, 10 hours a day for over 20 or 30 vendors that was down there taking care of their family. That's important. That's important to the vendors. That's important to the East Side. It goes back. A lot of the money that we spent with the East Side was to pay their rent with the necessities of us buying lunch or dinner while we were down there. And that little money makes the economy go around at this time in need when gas and inflation is high. All the support is needed. So I think you guys need to revisit that and take that off the agenda. And I think all City Council should do it as well. Thank you. My name is Michael Hunt.
Thank you. Walter Bechtel is our next speaker. Welcome, Mr. Bechtel.
Hello. Yes. I wanted to reiterate and state something I already stated before about illegal wiretapping going on in the private sector. I was not talking about the President's Patriot Act. This is something that's going on in the entertainment industry. Also, I find that participants, I find people involved in the Department of Corrections who are illegally wiretapping. I am an artist. I have a fine art degree. I also have background in music. My father used to distribute records, et cetera. And I am out millions and millions of dollars through people who are doing this. Nobody has done anything and I understand that refusal to act is only a criminal or action or in a civil court that provides immunity for people like yourselves who refuse to do anything about it. But I don't think that you're really representing the Constitution or the people of the United States if you allow or let these sort of things go on. And I am forced to inform my constituents, foreign and domestic, that you're not doing anything if you refuse to do something about this. So I would appreciate it, since you can identify Osama bin Laden through out of billions of people, that you please ask the FBI to prioritize the situation. I've contacted everybody all the way up to the Supreme Court. I've been sent back down here. And I'm, my next move is just simply like to inform the people, my constituents in domestic and foreign countries, that America is not representing its own Constitution. Thank you.
That closes our general public comment for today. If we can run through the agenda.
Mr. President, there, before beginning the regular agenda, there has been a request to continue item 21 week to September 20th.
Is there any objection, colleagues, to continuing item 20? Or 21, I'm sorry?
The 20th, one week.
So it's number 21 till the 20th?
Item number 21, one week to the 20th.
Got you, 2020. Any objection, colleagues, to continuing item number 20 until the 20th? If not, that'll be unanimously approved. Next items.
On the regular agenda, items 1 through 6 are confirmation of building and safety, liens, notice for public hearing. The department reports that on items 1 and 2, those can be received and filed in as much as the assessments have been paid. That leaves items 3 through 6, and there is a card on item number 3.
Okay. Why don't we call number 3 special for cards? I did want to inform the public, I believe it was, Mr. Clerk, you said that item number 7 and 8, the public hearings have already been closed on those?
Yeah, we're not there yet.
Okay. Let's see if there's any other specials, colleagues, 4, 5, and 6, and receiving filing 1 and 2. If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Items 7 and 8 are BIDs for the Old Granada Village property and the Arts District property. And the city clerk reports the results for the Old Granada Village property BID was 70.69% in favor and 29.04% opposed. And the results for the Arts District property BID was 64.15% in favor and 35.85% opposed.
Okay.
And the public hearings were closed at yesterday's meeting.
For any members of the public that filled out cards, even though it said notice for public hearing, that was from yesterday that we did, so our apologies on that. If there's any council member who would like to call those special? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those both are approved. Next items.
Items 9 through 13 are street vacation items, notice for public hearing, and the recommendation for council action is to instruct the city engineer to proceed.
Okay. You have the instruction. Anybody wishing to call any of those special?
Mr. President, there is a card on item 10 and 12.
Okay. Let's call 10 and 12 special for cards. And on the balance, any council members wishing to call them special? If not, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Parks? Which one?
13.
13 forthwith. There's no objection. We're not, I, we'll send 13 forthwith. Next items, please. Yes, Mr. Labange?
Did you fill out a card, ma'am?
On which item, ma'am?
Number 10.
We've already called that special, ma'am. We'll get to it. It's up on the board, don't worry. Next items, please.
Item 14 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 10, and the recommendation is to grant the application.
Okay. Item number 14 will require a motion. Mr. Wesson, did you want to move the recommendation on the public convenience of necessity? Okay. Mr. Wesson moves. We'll second that. And if we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item 15 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 11, and a motion is required to grant or deny the application.
Okay. Mr. Rosenthal moves that. I'll second that. To grant?
Yes.
And we will open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item.
Item 16 is a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 3, and the recommendation is to also grant the application.
Mr. Zine? Mr. Zine moves the recommendation to grant the application. We'll open the roll.
Mr. President, there actually is a card on that item.
Well, let's call that special then for the card. My apologies. We'll have that motion on the table and we'll call that special and hold that. Next item.
Item 17 is also a public convenience and necessity item in Council District 12. The recommendation is to grant the application, and there is also a card on that item.
Okay. We'll call that special for the card, although Mr. Smith moves that recommendation. Next items, please.
Items 18 through 31 are items for which public hearings have been held. Items 18 and 19 are commission appointments. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, let's hold those on the desk, please.
That would leave items 21 through 31. And reports have been submitted on 25, 26, and 30.
Okay. Colleagues, any specials? Mr. Zine?
23.
23 for Mr. Zine. Mr. Parks?
31.
31 for Mr. Parks. Any other specials, colleagues? This is 21 and 22, and then 24 through 30. If not, let's open the roll on the balance, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items, please.
Items 32 through 49 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. And on item 32, the CIA opened and closed the bids this morning for the solid waste resources revenue bonds and awarded the sale to Citigroup Global Markets Incorporated at a true interest cost of 4.205116%.
Okay. Specials? Mr. Gardiner, 32?
2.
Okay. Other specials, colleagues? 33 through 49. And we will open and close the public hearings on those. No other specials, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items.
Items 50 through 53 are the closed session items. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
Yes, let's hold those on the desk, please, for closed session.
That would take you back to the items called special. Do you wish to take up the commissioners first?
Yes, please. Let's take our commissioners first.
Item 18 is the appointment of Mr. Justin Kim to the Disabled Access Appeals Commission.
Okay. Mr. Kim, if you'd please come forward, and I'll recognize our Chair of our Arts Parks Committee, Mr. Labange.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. This is, the gentleman has a long, great, distinguished life and career and also family here in Los Angeles and wants to serve and serve well, has passion about helping people, appeared before our committee this morning. Strongly recommended for Mr. Justin Kim.
Thank you. Would you like to say anything to the council, sir, on your desire to serve?
I've been resident for 31 years for the City of L.A. I like to serve and contribute to the City of L.A.
Thank you very much. If nobody else would like to be heard from the council, we'll open the roll. I'm sorry, Mr. Wesson.
I will be brief, Mr. President and members. I just want to stand up and indicate that I've had the opportunity to know Mr. Kim for many, many years. He has the same first name as my youngest son, Justin, so that makes him okay. But on a serious note, when I was Speaker of the Assembly, he served on commissions that I created, and he did exemplary work, and I think that he'll be a phenomenal commissioner for us, so I urge an aye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. With that, if we can open the roll on the nomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please give our commissioner a round of applause. Our next nominee, please.
Item 19 is the reappointment of Mr. Young Kim to the Central Area Planning Commission.
Welcome, Mr. Kim.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. President, members of the council.
Good morning. Thank you for your desire to continue serving and a great job I know that you've been doing. Obviously, the Central Planning Commission overlaps with my own district. Mr. Reyes is the Chair of the Planning Land Use and Management Committee. I wanted to give him the opportunity to speak first, but why don't you tell us a little bit about your desire to continue serving first, and then we'll see if there's any questions?
It's been an honor to serve the city for the past four years, and a reappointment would give me the opportunity to continue the work that I've been doing.
Thank you. Mr. Reyes? Would you like to recognize Mr. Reyes for the Planning Commission nominee that is the Central Planning Commission nominee as well? Say a couple words.
First, I want to thank Mr. Kim for stepping up again. We met briefly. I do know that the Central Area Planning Commission is a commission with many challenges, very diverse neighborhood. The densities here are extraordinary, but I believe the diversity adds a richness that is hard to match anywhere else. Could you share with us some of your background and your experience and recognize the reappointment and what are more salient points that you've learned in this process?
Back in May of 2002, I was appointed to Central Area Planning Commission. During the past four-plus years, it's been a very long learning process, but I had some very good individuals that were able to give me some insights as far as planning direction is concerned. Previous presidents, other members of the commission at the time, and a lot of guidance from the council offices as well as the mayor's office. Taking that to heart, with all the challenges, there was a lot of rewards. We were able to do a lot of projects which kept the city moving forward and kept the growth that the mayor, from Mayor Han to Mayor Viragosa, continued wanted progression within the city. Central area encompasses downtown, Los Angeles, Mid-Wilshire, as well as the Hollywood area, where there's been a tremendous amount of growth as commercial as well as residential. So it's been a difficult balancing act, but at the same time, I believe that we were able to do a lot of good work for the benefit of the community.
I appreciate your support in the process. I know we've introduced from my office some rather innovative approaches, thinking vertically, the conversion of abandoned office buildings into residential towers, on and on. So again, thank you so much for your hard work and highly recommend Mr. Kim as a reappointment, and thank you for your work.
Thank you for your support, councilman.
Thank you. Two other council members would like to be heard next, starting with Mr. Rosenthal and then Mr. Wesson. Mr. Rosenthal.
Good morning. When you said you have to create this delicate balance between commercial and other, how are we doing to get that affordable housing and middle-class housing and working-class housing? And how does this bond measure in your mind fit in with some of your mission and priorities and objectives?
Housing, the City of L.A. being in a housing crisis, housing is a definite priority for the city as well as the commission. Right now, the mayor has promoted a lot more density as far as vertical growth is concerned, and I believe that that's an important aspect.
Can you just move your microphone a little closer? Thank you.
I believe that's an important aspect of providing the housing that the city definitely needs. As far as bond measures are concerned, whether it's at state or local levels, those are essential tools that can be utilized before the promotion of affordable housing with any type of development. Inclusionary housing is a great proposal. There's certain specific plans which require it, and I believe that it should definitely be upheld to promote additional units to provide work-class housing as well as market-rate housing.
And that's music to my ears. You know, the 11th District is under assault by the condo conversion strategy. I have a motion in to put a moratorium on it to protect my middle class. Are you having any issues at all with condo conversions flipping and forcing out working-class and middle-class people?
We had a couple cases where there were condo conversions that came before the commission. Essentially, a lot of the buildings that condo conversions that came before us were older buildings, so since they are within the rent control guidelines, they did do some displacement of working-class people. From my understanding, they were compensated for relocation, however, even with the compensation package, just the rents that are currently being charged within the city is probably not going to be enough to sustain them for quite a bit, even with the compensation package.
And that's the challenge we have. The CRA, is there projects in this district area there that they do?
CRA, basically, Central Area encompasses quite a bit of CRA districts. I know there's a lot of projects, a couple projects that come before us. Basically, from my recollection, they were mixed-use type of scenarios, and they did encompass housing. And I don't quite recall if it had an affordable component to it, but a lot of the projects that do have affordable components are definitely a priority because they provide housing which is muchly needed.
How long have you been on that commission?
Since 2002.
So what lessons learned and what are your dreams going forward in your reappointed status?
I've served as president for the past two years, and for the next term of my appointment, what I hope to do is able to keep the progression of the development of the city moving forward, commercial as well as residential. Residential, the housing crisis definitely is something that needs to be looked into, and hopefully we can support that development of more affordable housing as well as market-rate.
Well, we thank you very much for stepping back up to the plate. Congratulations on it. The city's better served by having you on that commission.
Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Mr. Wesson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and members. I want to rise to say there is really something to be said about experience, and we have an opportunity to reappoint a gentleman who has distinguished himself on this commission. So I basically rise to echo the sentiments of our colleague at Reyes and request that we all vote aye on this reappointment of Mr. Kim.
Thank you very much, councilman.
Thank you very much, councilmembers. And if there's nobody else wishing to be heard, we'll open the roll on the renomination, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Thank you again, and congratulations.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of the commission.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Item 3 was called special for a card from the public.
I'm sorry, actually, I had a request from a member to take 31 out of order, and then we'll come back to 3 and go straight through. So why don't we take 31?
31 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
And just before that, too, I'm sorry, I'd like to recognize Mr. Weezer for a short presentation.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. If I could indulge our council with recognizing one of my outgoing interns who did an outstanding job for us here while he entered in our office this summer. If I could ask George Esparza to come up here, and he is a graduate of Roosevelt High School in Boa Heights, and this fall he will continue his junior year at UC Center Barbara, where he majors in political science. And I wanted to give a farewell to Mr. Esparza and thank him for the wonderful work he did in contributing to improving the lives of the residents in Boa Heights. He was critical in arranging a public safety forum in Boa Heights and also helped us in getting over 300 people to come out and volunteer and have a cleanup in Boa Heights. And I wanted to wish George Esparza luck, thank him for his good work, and give him my certificate of appreciation for his good work, and tell him that we appreciate the work you've done on behalf of the Angelenos and the residents of Boa Heights. Thank you so much, George.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weezer. Next, I'd like to recognize Mr. Parks for item number 31.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. May I have the CAO up, please? Yeah, even me.
Not the other CAO.
Yeah, the other CAO. Bill, on this item, it's gone through two committees, but when it got to ITGS, there were some concerns expressed whether your office had looked at the additional comments made by General Services. They were to do a six-month overview of their progress, but they also came up with a variety of issues of increased costs, some items that may impact the issue of employee relations, and then there were some policy changes. I just need to know if you've had a chance to evaluate those.
Well, what we would like is the opportunity to report back through possibly your committee, you know, following our review of that report. So if we can do that, if we can schedule that in a couple of weeks, that'd be great.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to correct or just add some wording to instruction 2 on the ITGS report and ask that we move that report and that we, item, instruction 2 should read that the CAO/CLA report back to the Public Safety, Budget, and Finance and ITGS committees on the budgetary employee relations and the proposed policy changes as detailed in the General Services Department report dated 5/30/06.
Okay. That's, if there's no objection, that'll be accepted as a friendly amendment. And thank you, Mr. Parks. I'd like to recognize next Ms. Grul.
Thank you. Mr. Fujioka, don't go away too fast, sorry. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. And I want to concur with Mr. Parks' recommendation of it coming back to Budget and Finance about some of the issues. You know, there's a number of things that they identify funding needs in this report, and it'd be interesting to see as they come forward which ones would have been required or needed even if we didn't have the consolidation, and which are a function of the consolidation as well, so we can see kind of apples and oranges in that way. And I think we saw the effectiveness recently during the break of the coordination between all of the Office of Public Safety and LAPD. And maybe as we come back and have this on the budget side, I would be interested to get some feedback as to how that worked. I can't imagine during that period of time in which we were looking at how we were going to be able to provide the services during the walkout without having the Office of Public Safety kind of knowing and being for all the buildings versus having to call Library Department, you know, wreck and parks, different locations. Any comments you want to make just quickly on those kind of two points?
On a preliminary basis, and it was more than evident during the recent work action, GSD stepped up to the table, and I think they performed extremely well. You know, they were at all of our facilities, they were helping with crowd control, they were doing what was necessary. But what's more than apparent is that as GSD is increasing its presence, everyone's recognizing the need for more officers, for a greater level of security at our, if not only our city buildings, but more important, at our parks and other wreck centers. And so what will happen, the report will probably come back saying it's working, but we still need more to make it work even better, because there's a huge unmet need when it comes to safety and security at all of our county sites, I'm sorry, city sites.
Remember where you work. But, thank you, and I think that that will be interesting. And I know part of, when we adopted the creation of Office of Public Safety, we particularly asked for periodic reports back as well to talk about its effectiveness and so forth. But I do think, I've heard nothing but good things from the departments who previously had their own security and are now, you know, part of the GSD kind of family. And I know the commission committee, I'm not sure what we're calling it, has been meeting regularly as well, which has individuals who represent commissioners, actually, from those departments that were consolidated into the Office of Public Safety. So I just want to say-
From the department's perspective, I'm hearing that they're very pleased, because they're seeing a greater security presence at their facilities.
And I also heard from LAPD, the kind of relationship that they've developed there as well has been very helpful on a number of issues, including some kind of homeland security efforts and then our, you know, ability to protect our buildings during that period of time. So just wanted to add that when you come back with the building, the report, that you do look at those that would normally be requested and those that are specific to now that we have a consolidated department.
We'll do that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Grul. Other members wishing to be heard? If not, let's open the roll. As amended, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That's approved. Thank you. If we can go back to top of the agenda?
Item 3, and that was for a card from the public.
Okay. I'd like to ask Loronda Byrd to come forward. Loronda Byrd, welcome. You have two minutes to address. Thank you.
Hello. Basically, I'm just here against the property of 119 East 111 Street. This was going through a probate matter, and there was, you know, we didn't know if this property had to be sold or whatever. It was left to my minor daughter in a will. And the lawyer that was over the case, it was a situation of that it might had to be sold, and when we found that it didn't, it already had the lien of the hazardous substance already recorded on it. Once I came into guardianship of her estate, then the city slapped me with the liens or whatever. I don't feel that I should be responsible for all of these, because when I did speak to, you know, city inspector, I did take care of some of the things that he asked me to take care of. Far as the fencing, they did do some of the work, far as the front fencing and barricading of some of the windows, not the whole property, because I did what was open at the time. So I'm just here basically, you know, saying that I understand that some of the lien that I have on me, but I don't feel that I should be totally responsible for the whole thing, because I did try to work with them. I'm a single parent, and, you know, I have to live for myself as well. I didn't basically know, you know, the whole thing of that I had to do all of the work. I tried to do the most of the work that I could do. And, I mean, I really think that the lawyer that was over this or whoever was the minister at, before me, should have handled this matter instead of it being just basically all on me. So, I mean, I really, like I told the guy here, I didn't know, I really don't know why I'm here. I think the lawyer should be here, you know, because he's the one-
I'm sorry, ma'am, your time's up, but we'd be happy to have somebody speak to you a little further over here on the sides, but thank you so much. And Ms. Han, whose district it's in, has passed her button, ma'am. Ma'am?
Thank you. I think why you're here, and I appreciate you coming here, is because I think this is the place you want to be to question whether or not all these fees are something that should be, you know, borne by you. I'm looking at the pictures of the house. It does look, you know, in bad shape. It's pretty rundown, but again, you said, this is a house that you inherited, right? Your minor daughter inherited it. And certainly, you would agree that, you know, we got to keep vacant property safe and, you know, looking somewhat decent in a neighborhood. But let me ask Dave Keim to come up from Building and Safety. Maybe you can explain to me as well what exactly these fees were for? And have you been working with her, and has she been cooperative and working to do as much of the work as, you know, she could do? Or why don't you tell us what the situation is?
Sure. Good morning, councilmember. Dave Keim, Chief of Building and Safety's Code Enforcement Bureau.
Dave Keim, Chief of Building and Safety's Code Enforcement Bureau. This is a property that started off as basically an open vacant building that needed some work on it. We were unable to get the owner at the time to do that work, so the department was compelled by ordinance to actually fence the property. We did clean up on the property and the yards, et cetera, and we barricaded the building to keep people from going inside. Our direct cost on that was approximately $3,900. That's what we paid the contractor to do the work. The remainder of the $5,589 represents the administrative costs. The code requires that we charge a 40% administrative cost in addition to that, and that's about, roughly about $1,700.
Okay. Now, she has said that she tried to do some of the work herself, you know, but obviously a lot of the work she wasn't able to do. But did you find that, have you been working with her, talking to her?
Yeah, we had made several attempts to get the property owner to do that work initially, but there, for whatever reason, we're unable to do that work, yes.
And how long did you get her to do that work?
I don't have the file. Let me get my assistant up here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
What's the date of the abate?
Chair Reeves, Building and Safety. Okay. The abate was issued... Whoa! Oh!
You know, that happened.
I'm an idiot. I'm fine. I'm fine.
You know, that's not the first time this has happened. This is not the first time this has happened. There's something that Bill Fujioka almost fell. We've had several people fall. Could we, like, take a look at this? It's...
Thank you.
Someone wasn't overachiever in waxing the floors. I know we have good city employees here, but someone went beyond. This is not the first time this has happened, so can I make a formal request-
I'm fine.
-that we look at this?
Thank you.
And either put a nonstick mat down there or... It's happened before.
That I do-
It's changed, too. Someone's used a different kind of wax or something there. Not the first time.
Thank you so much for providing a good excuse for me.
No, no, no. I've sat here and watched it happen several times. Someone needs to take a look at that.
Okay.
Okay. Is this a building and safety issue?
The same issue, yes.
Yeah. Okay, okay.
We abated the property in April of '04. The property remained clean and secure until approximately March of '05. We did contact the property owner. The property owner did partially clean the property.
Okay.
And then it became dirty or unclean and unsecure again in two months.
So there were some... To answer your question, Councilmember, there were some attempts by the property owner to try to keep the property clean, but they were just unable to do it completely.
Well, here's my recommendation. It's clearly, I mean, I take a pretty strong feeling about wherever a home is, whatever neighborhood in the City of Los Angeles, I... We need to, number one, it's a public safety issue. We had to board up the windows and doors to keep people from... We've had instances, particularly in that community, you know, of vacant houses, you know, being used for criminal activity. So that's number one, is we have to keep it safe, whatever neighborhood it is in. And I know you tried to do the work, some of it wasn't able to do. What I would suggest, because I relate to you, I relate to you being a single parent, trying to do the best you can. However, you do have a house, which hopefully you'll fix up and it'll be valuable and it'll be worth something. So maybe my suggestion is to waive the administrative fees and just pay for the straight work that the contractor did to get that house safe and, you know, not be a nuisance in that community. And we'll waive the administrative fees that you don't have to pay that, if that's agreeable to everybody. And I'm sure they'll work with you on payment, payment schedule. Do you work with them on payment schedules?
Yeah, that would be actually Department of Public Works. They're the ones that maintain the liens on the property, but we'll contact them and talk to them.
Okay. That's my recommendation, because you probably do need to pay for the work that was done.
Okay. Is there any city grants or anything that I can apply?
Well, can you talk and work with the homeowner?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
You bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. My assumption is then that you'll amend... Ms. Hahn? I think we'll amend then the amount that will be reflective of the fact that no administrative fees would be charged-
Thank you.
...associated with that. We don't have the exact amount, so we'll have to, Mr. Clerk, have that as part of the record.
Yeah, Madam President, the motion would be to waive the administrative fees.
Administrative fees.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we include that. Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Very good solution to that. The item is now before us. Madam... Excuse me, Mr. Clerk, or Madam Clerk, sorry. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on that item. Tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. That item is approved. Next item is...
Item 10 was called special for a card from the public.
Okay. Before that, Mr. Smith, did you have a question?
I, no, I just asked, I was going to ask that number seven go forthwith, and on behalf of Ms. Perry, who is now here, number eight also forthwith.
Okay. Seven and eight will go forthwith. Item number 10, we have two cards, William Sharp and Sharon Sharp.
Yes, we'd like to address this to Mr. Rosenthal... Rosendall. We are the adjacent neighbors of the property to be vacated. We are here because the boundaries at the alleyway curves, and we have 22.6 feet at the alleyway, where the applicant has over 78 feet at the alleyway. We have been concerned about the boundary, about keeping our access, our 22.6 extended feet at the alleyway. Months ago, the applicant informed us that the map provided by the city was incorrect. We have sent the applicant three letters asking him to show us the boundary. The last letter asked for a meeting of interested neighbors. To date, we have not had an acceptable answer or have seen any southern boundary. If the map provided by the city is wrong, it is totally unacceptable. If the map provided by the city is right, the whole vacation of easement is unacceptable because it will take all our part of our access and our extended land.
Our consents are required by the Public Works Report of August 11th, and at this time, we cannot give our consents because of these problems.
Thank you.
Public Works said to come before the council on the side.
Yes, we have representatives from the Public Works Department here? Looks like not, and what we'll do is we'll hold this on the table.
Hold it on the desk until somebody from Public Works comes and we'll discuss it.
So we'll be able to discuss it in a minute when we have someone from Public Works. If you're listening, Public Works would like a representative for item number 10. Mr. Clerk, next item.
Item 12 was called special for a card from the public.
Yes, I'd like to call Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins. Ms. Hawkins?
Okay, this is item number seven.
This is item number 12. Item seven has already been approved.
Oh, item seven, number 12?
Twelve.
Thank you. Okay, on number 12. I am asking all United States of America post office drivers, mail deliverers, please note that all mail is illegally being sent to wrong addresses, shipped from all jail cells, from all 50 states.
Madam President, she does not appear to be on topic.
This item is a street vacation, about vacating an alley.
Okay, I'm trying to... Okay, you want me to...
What he's indicating is that you need to have, your comments should be referred to the item that's before us, which is vacating the alley.
Okay, I will speak on item number 16.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk? Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item 16 was called special for a card from the public.
Yes, Mr. Hunt. This item number 16, followed by Ross Andrus, and followed then by Sylvia Lynn Hawkins.
Is this for the tobacco license, Mr. Zine?
This is for liquor license.
Mr. Zine, this is in your district, correct? Have you done an investigation on how many liquor licenses? Is it feasible?
Excuse me, Madam President.
These are your people.
Excuse me, the Speaker must direct his comments to the council as a whole.
Well, I can address Mr. Zine. That's what the new ordinance says. But anyways, I think that since you used to be a police officer and you know the ins and outs of this, I think that if it's in your area and you've investigated and you think it's worthwhile, I support you on this one.
Mr. Zine?
I'd like to respond to the question. I appreciate it.
Mr. Zine, we do have two other speakers. You want to wait until we hear from the other speakers?
On the same...
On the same, my mother.
Okay, sure.
Okay, thank you. Ross Andrus?
That's me, speaking as Ross Andrus today for this one, only because it's in CD3, and I remember Van Nuys, there was talk about when people don't have their issues solved, they should go to the CLA and have a representative from them. Well, I actually followed up with that and sent a little email to the CLA, and he never responded, so that was before the vacation. So I'm just going to pick on things that I see that, you know, that can push everything forward, and I mean everything. This one, the most interesting thing about this is in Part One, you know, the issuance of a liquor license, and at the end it says, "and will not tend to create a law enforcement problem." And yet everywhere I go, Venice, you know, everywhere, the city, liquor is outlawed in public places. It's the prime cause of law enforcement problems. So I wonder where the researchers that went into that little statement, because I think in that neighborhood, you know, Target, especially being a supermarket chain, they tend to have cheaper alcohol as well. So I think people are more likely to go to Target, load up with a case of beer, and then when the beer's consumed, you might end up with graffiti all over your neighborhood. So I know it's going to go through and, you know, but alcohol, it's, I think it will tend to create law enforcement problems, you know, wherever it is. And Target, like I said, they're going to create an opportunity for people to get their liquor cheaper, so I'd be watching out for the graffiti all around the Target.
Ms. Sylvia Lynn Hawkins?
Pardon me, Mr. City Clerk, City Attorney, concerned about me on the agenda. This is talking about the ordinance, and you did not give me time enough to complete it. It is talking about what is going on with the ordinance and the section codes. So how can you help me before I complete it? I'm talking about on number 12. Can I have an answer, please?
We're on item number 16 right now. Public...
I know I'm on 16, but you stopped me on number 12. You did not let me complete.
What the city attorney advised you is that you had to talk about the vacation of the alley, and you indicated, I think, in your comments-
This is about that. He did not let me complete.
Well, that was item 12.
Okay, I want to know why he halted it.
I'm not sure what verb you're using.
No, you're not sure. You can't stop it.
All I told you was that you were off topic talking about the post office.
Number 16, please. City Attorney again. Can you listen to it first before you begin to judge it?
Ms. Hawkins, if you could just... Item 16.
I'm on number 16.
Thank you. Then just please proceed.
Ms. Garell, now y'all know what the problem is. You just lost your chief police officer, a woman. Elle is dead. Now y'all getting mad. Hogwarts, it's on now. Civil C going through. Now come on, y'all, if it gets a more death.
Mr. Zine?
Can you ask Mr. Zine to respond to that, too?
I'm lost into that one. I don't know what that one's about. I'd like to respond on the issue regarding the Target and the licensing, the ABC. These requests all go through the Neighborhood Council, through the Los Angeles Police Department, the particular vice operation in my office, and we do a check in the area. This particular establishment is a new Target being developed as part of Westfield's billion-dollar expansion at the old Topanga Plaza. There are safeguards, there are conditions on the sale, the display, et cetera, of the alcoholic beverages. There's no alcohol to be consumed on premises, and it is in the strict guidelines of Westfield that we're in agreement with this. So Target has been a good neighbor. They've got a number of stores in my district. They're fully compliant. Anytime we have a situation, the management and the corporation is there to assist. It's not a law enforcement, it's not a community problem. Again, this all goes through Neighborhood Council for first review, through the Police Department, through the vice, through my office. So with the conditions that have been placed on this, we have no problems with granting this applicant for the sale of alcoholic beverages at the new Target, which we hope the people will visit on Topanga Canyon between Victory and Van Nuys in the new Westfield shopping town in the West San Fernando Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Madam Clerk, the item is now before us. If you could open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
That item's been approved. Next item?
Item 17 was called special for a card from the public.
Yes, Mr. Matt Dought.
Thank you, and people at Target can thank us for that extended advertisement for their new store and complex. All right, number 17, more of the same beverages and more. I'm going to hope that this particular one's gone through the same scrutiny as the previous one, according to Mr. Zine, and, you know, I just want to remind people that, you know, the Mel Gibson incident was caused by alcohol, even though, you know, there is a question as to where that bottle of tequila came from that he was caught with in the front seat of that car, moving violation that can kill people. So, you know, that's another issue, and I'm surprised you haven't picked me up for getting off the topic, Mr. City Attorney. You're doing a great job, though, anyway. Thanks for all the info you provided, and let's pass this one unanimously, huh? Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, open the roll on this item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
That item has been approved. Next item?
Item 23 was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine, item number 23.
Yes, we've discussed this, and there are some problems that have risen at this late hour, so I request a one-week continuance on this matter so we can help resolve this issue. We thought that it was supposed to do something, and apparently it's going to do something else. So instead of laboring, taking the time here, we'd like to just give it one more week, and we'll meet with the different committee members and hopefully resolve the matter.
Without objection, that'll be continued one week till next Wednesday. Mr. Clerk, if we could reconsider item number six, Ms. Perry would like it to be continued to September 20th, so if we could reconsider. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on reconsideration, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen ayes.
That item is now before us, and if we could, then we will continue that to September 20th. Next item?
Item 32 was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Mr. Cardenas?
Thank you. Hello? So today, this morning, bids were opened, right, on this bond?
Yes, Natalie Brill at the CAO's office.
Okay, so bids were opened this morning, and we got one, two, three, four, five, six bidders?
Correct.
Okay. Can you please describe for the people watching, when they bid, what did they... What was the most pertinent thing that they said in the bid that caused us to award, apparently, Citigroup Global, right?
The way that the notice of bidding bids and the notice of intention to bid that the City Council approved about a month ago was that this was a competitive bid, meaning that we would tell the market how much we wanted to sell in bonds, and they in turn would respond with a true interest cost. And Citigroup was chosen as the lowest interest cost through a closed bid process as the City Charter requires us to do for competitive bidding.
Okay. So I'd like to point out that these bids are very serious and-
Yes.
-what looks like a small figure actually ends up being thousands of dollars. For example, Citigroup Global Markets bid 4.205116, and then Stone and Youngberg LLC bid 4.07221.
Yes.
Within two one-thousandths of each other. But again, with all due respect, that's real money.
Yes, it is.
It's not like pennies. It's thousands of dollars the difference. And this is about a $59, $60 million bond?
This is $59 million, correct.
Okay. The reason why I wanted to point that out is because in other bidding processes in the city, somebody might bid or what have you, and going that far- city, somebody might bid or what have you, and going that far into the, past the decimal point really doesn't make a difference. But I just wanted to point out, in these cases, when it comes to interest rates, we're talking about millions of dollars, so it is a big difference. That's why when they bid, they go as far as five decimal places beyond the decimal point here. Now, how many of the bidders on the list are actually local firms headquartered in, say, Southern California, basically local?
Of the six bidders here, Stone &amp; Youngberg has, I believe, their corporate headquarters in California. But none of these firms are, have headquarters here, although they all have offices and desks here and in San Francisco, where the major markets are.
Okay.
But most of the firms are registered in New York to be able to trade in the marketplace.
Okay. And in this process, do some of these firms make a gesture, a promise, that they're going to involve small firms or other firms in doing the business that they do?
Yes. When we sent out the actual offering document, which is our official statement, there is a letter that goes out from the City Administrative Officer reminding all the firms that we do want them to make a good faith effort to have smaller firms participate with them. And as such, when the bids come in, we do request of them to send us their syndicate, their group that they are participating in. And Citigroup did do that, and they do have one smaller firm that is involved, and that would be MR Beal &amp; Company. And they are the smaller firm that has been, or has agreed to join into their group.
So, they're going to be like a team working on this?
Yes, they will assist in selling the bonds. MR Beal is a company that the city currently has on contract for our Playa Vista project. They're involved in that project also, and that was a negotiated deal.
Okay. And now, did they indicate how much participation this firm is going to have?
Yes, they indicated they would have a million dollars.
A million dollars out of about 59, $60 million transaction.
Yeah, and that, we can't, the way the deal was structured, we can't control that. We don't know if that's what MR Beal wanted. We don't know if that's what was given to them. I mean, that's something we can find out once the bids are awarded.
You took the words right out of my mouth. I'd like to know for our edification, understanding, once they make those good faith commitments, and then they follow through with teaming up with a smaller firm, what kind of dialogue or what kind of relationship ensues from that, and how do they arrive at those figures? It'd be good for us to know, since we're asking them that information upfront. I think it's important for us to understand, once these private entities do their talking or negotiating, what goes on? And obviously, they're probably not, they don't have to give us infinite details about what goes on, but hopefully they will give us enough detail so we can say, aha, so that's how you interact with each other when you hire a smaller firm to team up with you?
When I run into the companies at the different conferences that we attend and the different business dealings that we have with them, one of the things that we emphasize with the underwriters, that we like to see local and minority and business relations in their deals. We want to see the smaller firms participate. And the city has had a long practice of including those smaller firms. Obviously, under Proposition 209, we can all give preferences like we used to. We can't do that anymore. So, we've tended to shift our program to smaller firms versus before, what was more minority and woman-owned. Because they tend to be the smaller firms, people who go out on their own after they've been in the big houses. They go out on their own, and they are smaller firms. And we're currently trying to find a mechanism to be able to allow them to participate more. And we have been talking to the proprietaries also to see how that can be done, because we understand that that only helps the city if they're involved.
Okay. Now, this is not what you call a negotiated transaction. But in a negotiated transaction, the city does have more input about who's going to participate and at what levels?
Correct. And we have, I would say, about 10 deals out of the, I don't know, maybe we have 80 or to 100 deals out there, maybe about 10% of them, I would say, are negotiated for different reasons. It really depends on the deal itself. And at that point, when we go out to RFP, to the underwriters for these negotiated deals, we request all types of information from them, and that helps determine what the deal structure, what we recommend to the mayor and council is. And part of that is smaller firms, because we want to see those smaller firms grow. We only, we really benefit from competition, and we want to see those smaller firms grow and have more competition. It only helps our cost.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. But also, when you look at negotiated versus competitive, regardless of which way we do this, the firms are qualified if they're going to be participating?
Oh, absolutely. They have to...
It's not about saying, well, you're small, therefore, we're going to take, roll the dice and take a risk with you. Basically, relatively speaking, in a competitive or negotiated transaction, it's understood and it's documented that the firms participating, taking part in the actual sale of these bonds, are qualified.
Yes, and they, you know, the Securities and Exchange Commission has very specific details on registering these firms and the rules they have to follow, and they have to follow those. If not, they get investigated and sanctioned, and we are very aware of that. And so, we make sure that they are definitely qualified. And the City Attorney participates in those decisions and assists us also.
Good, I'm glad to hear that we have that thoroughness. Yet, at the same time, can you give me an idea about what these six firms that vied for this on a $59 million, $60 million transaction? These are all brokers, and they're looking to lead the transaction. What, relatively speaking, what kind of fee amounts are they vying for in a transaction of this amount?
We don't have the breakdown of fee here with us, because since we haven't awarded technically yet the deal, we don't have all the information yet.
But for example, on this kind of transaction, whether it's negotiated, competitive, or what have you, a brokerage firm isn't going to get in the range of 10% of the gross amount of the transaction. There's a relative range of which these brokerage firms are hoping to pull down in fees, right?
It's usually less than that. It's about...
I just picked that number out of the sky.
Right, it's usually four to five basis points.
There you go.
So, you know, that may be, what, $200,000 to $300,000 maybe? It's hard to tell, because I haven't seen the details of the debt service yet.
So, basically, these six bidders were basically looking at doing some work for the city of Los Angeles, responsible work, qualified firms. They were looking to engage in a transaction, hopefully win a bid where several hundred thousand dollars is what they're going to be working for when it comes to their compensation.
For selling the bonds.
Out of fees or basis points, as you pointed out.
Yes, it comes out of this. And, you know, it's their responsibility to sell these bonds and to market these bonds, basically.
And in all fairness to these six firms, they also take a risk.
Yes, they do.
When they say they're going to sell the bonds in 4.205116, heaven forbid some tragedy happens in the world and the market takes a turn, they have to honor it, correct?
Yes, we get our money either way.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, that item is now before us. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen eyes.
That item's been approved. I know Mr. Rosendahl is now ready for item number 10. If we could bring back item number 10.
Thank you, Madam President. I spoke with the constituents and clearly pointed out that the issue will not be resolved until everybody agrees in the alleyway, but we want to move forward with it. They're willing to go along with me, and that's why I just put it back on and say, let's approve it.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, if you could open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Fourteen eyes.
Item's been approved. Next item?
Madam President, that does leave the closed session items.
Yes, Mr. Clerk, we do have one public speaker card on item number 52. If we could hear that prior to going into closed session, if I could ask Mr. Arnold Sacks?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just had a question. I noticed that Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad is involved in this litigation, and on Friday, August 18th of 2006, Daily Breeze wrote an article regarding the Alameda, about, excuse me, the Harbor subdivision rail line that runs through the South Bay area. And I was wondering, that that right-of-way, or that rail line is operated by Burlington Northern Santa Fe, and both Councilwoman Hahn and Councilman Rosendahl were interested in, there was, this right-of, this line was purchased by the MTA back in '93, but Burlington Northern still has legal use for right-of-way, and they run some of their trains, although not as many as they used to. And I was wondering if included in this litigation, there could be some trade-off that would allow the MTA to better utilize that line as a commuter line. There was some discussion in this article that Harbor subdivision line would be somewhere down the highway, who knows, 10 years made available as a light rail system, a metro link system, something to link up to the airport. And I was wondering if a quid pro quo could be worked out with Burlington Northern in this litigation, since they're involved in something else with the Alameda Corridor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, I'd like to announce we're going into closed session.
Thank you, Madam President. In conformance with California law, California Government Code Section 549, 56.9, council will now recess into closed session to consider items number 50 through 53.
Welcome back into open session. Mr. City Attorney, if you'd like to, oh, sorry, Mr. Clerk, if you'd like to run down the settlements that we...
Yes, Mr. President, on item 50, there is a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $250,000 in the case of Saraya Razmi versus the City of LA.
All right, if we can open the roll on that one, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
That is approved. Next item?
On item 51, there's a recommendation for settlement in the amount of $810,000 in the case of Paul Pastidas versus the City of LA.
Please open the roll on that, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Next item?
On item 52, the City Attorney will speak to the recommendations.
Item number 52 involves litigation involving the City of Los Angeles, City of Long Beach, Alameda Corridor Transportation Authority, Burlington Northern Railway, Union Pacific Railroad Company, and the terms of the agreement are summarized as follows. There'll be a permanent fee increase. The railroads agree to an immediate $90 per 20-foot equivalent unit permanent increase in the use fee and the container charge for loaded containers. There's an annual CPI adjustment. The ceiling for the annual CPI fee charge adjustment, as defined in the Use and Operating Agreement, is increased from 3% to 4.5%. There are additional contingent temporary fee increases. In addition to the permanent fee increase, the railroads agree to a fee increase of $1 per TEU in the use fee and container charge for loaded containers arriving or leaving by ship. There's an extension of the term to the year 2062. Details listed in the three operative agreements, the Settlement and Release Agreement, the Amendment to the Use and Operating Agreement, and Amendment to the Joint Powers Agreement, are available upon request.
Thank you. Can you open the roll on this, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
Twelve eyes.
That's approved. Next item?
On item 53, the City Attorney will speak to the recommendations.
Item number 53 involves the litigation entitled Clear Channel Outdoor versus the City of LA and Vista Media Group versus the City of LA. Summary of the terms of that settlement, or at least the city in principle will be settling in this one. Clear Channel and CBS shall take down 49 structures each. Each company will provide the city with addresses for all of their off-site signed structures in the city and with copies of all permits in their files. Each company shall pay an initial inspection fee of $186 per signed structure to cover the cost of inspection for the first three years, plus an additional $184 to cover the cost of inspection for the second three years. The agreement shall terminate after six years. Each company shall take down all structures erected in or after 1999 for which no permits can be located, and the city will allow each company to modernize up to 420 structures for a total of 840 structures. And there are various settlement terms regarding future issuance of permits for various structures.
Thank you. Anybody wishing to be heard on this? If not, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, next item?
That concludes the closed session recommendations. I do believe there was a request to reconsider item 22?
Yes, please, if we can open the roll on reconsideration of item 22. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
I recognize Mr. Parks for correction.
We'd ask that the transfer of the $1 million be from the over $100,000 liability account versus what's currently stated that we're taking it from the outside council account. And if the, my understanding, the numbers are Fund 100, Department 59, account number 9770.
Thank you. All right, if there's no, yes, Mr. City Attorney?
Just for clarification's sake also, in closed session in the voting on all those four matters, the votes were 14-0, but Councilmembers Gruehl and Weiss were not present for the voting in open session.
Got it. Thank you very much for that clarification. And as amended, if we can take up 22, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Okay, that is approved. Next order of business?
Council has motions for posting referral?
Those are posted and referred?
The desk is clear.
Okay. Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Reyes?
Move forthwith on number 26, please.
If there's no objection, forthwith on number 26, colleagues. Other announcements? No announcements adjourning motions, colleagues? If I can please ask everybody to rise for adjourning motions.
Could we have, I just have one announcement?
Oh, yes, announcements, Mr. Parks.
Just one announcement. The Crenshaw Christian Centers having their semi-annual beatification project September 23rd, 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at their campus.
Thank you for that. And of course, tomorrow is the Mayoral Housing Summit over at UCLA, tradition launched a few years ago to look at affordable housing and housing issues. We'll invite people to join over at the Anderson School throughout the day at UCLA tomorrow. Other announcements, anybody? Not adjourning motions, starting with Ms. Hahn.
I'd like to adjourn in memory of Doug Martin, who unfortunately passed away after he was electrocuted while working as a plant manager at the Wilmington sulfur processing plant. He was only 48 years old. He was a longtime member and board member of the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce. He's survived by his wife Beverly, his children Travis, Samantha, and Rebecca, his parents, Douglas Senior and Barbara, his sisters Rena, Janice, Cindy, and Pat, and a brother Ray. He will certainly be missed by his family, friends, and his business associates. I'd also like to adjourn in memory of Harold Romberg, who passed away after a battle with Alzheimer's disease. He was the owner of the Marine Radio Service in Wilmington for 47 years and was an avid sailor. His wife predeceased him, and she was his sailing partner of 21 years, Evelyn, and he is also survived by his daughter Corinne. He's survived by his daughters Jean and Helene, six grandchildren, three great-grandchildren, and his brother John. One more, I'd like us to adjourn in memory of Alex Torres, who was a longshoreman for 23 years. He unfortunately passed away at the age of 45, and he's survived by both his parents, Manuel and Guadalupe Torres, sisters Ruth, Connie, and Sandra, brothers Raymond, Manuel, and John, 15 nieces and nephews, 16 great nieces and nephews, and many relatives and friends, and especially his special brother Danny Chavez. He will also be greatly missed. May he rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. LeBarge?
I believe you did a long, full life to 90, but Dick Huggy Boy Hug, famous Los Angeles DJ, passed, came... Los Angeles DJ, uh, passed, came, uh, from Dayton, Ohio to Los Angeles, grew up in Ohio, but he was on all the radio stations and all the old revival, uh, rock and roll revival was a great leader of that. Dick Huggy Boy Hug, I ask we adjourn in his memory. Also, Anita Feltes McCoy, uh, passed away, born in Bakersfield, California, received her BA from Cal State L.A., uh, and a master's in social work from UCLA, and taught at UCLA and Cal State University Fullerton. Uh, she founded the Child and Family Services Department at the Edelman, uh, Westside Mental Health Center. She was a constituent of the fourth district, survived by her husband Sean and two children. Ask we adjourn in memory of Anita Feltes McCoy. And finally, Elisa Polino, a young girl who I grew up with, was in my brother Bobby's grade. Uh, she had a twin sister Kathy, uh, went to school of Mothergood Council, grew up in the Las Feliz area, still lived in Las Feliz area, tragically a victim of cancer. Uh, she survived by her, uh, daughter Alexandria. Uh, she was a good, good friend of Jody Ochsheimer, our very own CIO. Uh, Alexandria goes to Immaculate Hart High School. Her twin sister Kathy survived her, as well as her brother Gino. I ask we adjourn in memory of Elisa Polino, one a very special young lady.
Thank you, Mr. Lavange. Other adjourning motions, colleagues? Mr. Zine. I'm sorry, Mr. Wesson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President and, and members. Today I rise to adjourn in the memory of Perry Parks Junior, who passed away Friday, September eighth, at the age of ninety-eight. He was the father of a prominent cable executive that we all know, Perry Parks the Third. And Mr. Parks, at one time, when I first met him, was a field deputy for then Congresswoman, uh, Yvonne Brathwaite Burke. Uh, he was born in Atlanta, Georgia, in nineteen oh, oh, eight. Uh, he attended Wiley College in Texas, where he got his master's in public administration, and he did complete courses at USC towards, uh, his PhD. He was a founding member of the Los Angeles chapter of Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity, which is the great fraternity that I happen to be a member of. Uh, he was, uh, very, uh, committed to the community. He was an organizer with the National Alliance of Postal Employees. He was an active member of the Board of Directors of Avalon Carver Community Center, Challengers Boys and Girls Club, Black Agenda, Black Leadership. Uh, he also served as Vice President of the Barrio Defense Fund, President of the South Central Welfare Planning Council, and he was a board member of Southern Christian Leadership Council, Council Urban, Urban League, and a founding member of the Brotherhood Crusade. He is survived by two sons, Perry the Third and Henry. He's also survived by two sisters, Lucy and Carrie, grandsons Perry, number four, and Callan. The funeral services will be Monday, ten a.m. at the Angeles Funeral Home.
Mr. Resendell?
Yes, I just want to comment about Perry Parks the Third, of course, and I spent twenty-five years together as very close friends and are still close friends. And, um, if there's a legacy that his father, uh, has left us all, is his sons, especially the Perry that I knew, who, who truly was, uh, is an incredible community leader, and his father, uh, you know, did that. And so may, may it be all members, uh, would be my hopes.
All members, all members on--
Bernard?
Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. I'd just like to comment, uh, Perry Junior, uh, and I worked side-by-side in, uh, at University Village for a number of years, because he was at one time a deputy for Teresa Hughes. And, uh, we, at, at the time, in the police department, had South Bureau was assigned next door. And so we had some great relationships and contacts. And, uh, many of us may not realize, but Perry the Third was an All-American football player out of Emmanuel Arts. And so, uh, he, uh, long lineage there of successful people.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Zine?
Captain Lane Kemper passed away September twelfth. Captain Lane Kemper, and a member of Los Angeles City Fire Department since November eighteenth, nineteen seventy-five, served the LAFD for nearly thirty-one years. Lane was born and raised in Santa Ana Valley, resided in Northridge. During his career, served the communities of downtown Los Angeles, South Los Angeles, Mission Hills, Silver Lake, and the Chandler Estates. Nationally known for his concepts and training in the area of forcible entry, been instrumental in the training of thousands of firefighters throughout his career, leaves a legacy of pride and professionalism in the Los Angeles City Fire Department. Los Angeles Fire Department family, friends truly miss Captain Kemper, remembering his smile, calm demeanor will forever leave our hearts filled with love. Survived by his wife Rose and twin eight-year-old daughters, Kalen and Kelsey. Captain Lane Kemper, may he rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Lavange.
Worked with him when he was, when I was just started here, and there was a great muster up at Dodger Stadium, a fireman's muster, one of the first in the city. And, uh, he, uh, worked right down here at Seventeens on Santa Fe and, uh, was a great leader for that. And Danny was at, uh, Hope for Firefighters just this year, and everybody in the fire department was rallying him on Lane, what an inspirational man. And again, a victim of cancer and, uh, a great leader. Uh, all members on that, Mr. President. God bless Lane Kemper.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lavange. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. We will next be in session this Friday, uh, that is, uh, September the fifteenth, two thousand and six. Uh, this meeting, the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned. Have a